Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Ann, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheetham?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Blad?
Here. Thank you. If you would all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you would remain standing for the invocation, the invocation will be offered by Pastor Scott Sampson from Rocky Mountain Ministries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we are so thankful to be here today in this great nation, which we are grateful for. And we're grateful for our great city, Pocatello. We ask you to bless our nation and to bless our city. And Father, we ask you to bless these men and women who lead us, guide and direct in this meeting today. Let it be a good meeting that you can bless. And we ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Great voice.
No doubt about it. I'll bet he can sing like crazy, too. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three as a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate Agenda Item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification meeting and regular council meeting of April 5, 2018. B. Treasurers Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurers Report for March 2018 showing cash and investments as of March 31, 2018. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city, tonight am presenting the Treasurers Report for the month of March 2018. Total cash and cash equivalents of city's monies totaling $43,457,82. Total long-term investments, $4,607,247. Total cash, cash equivalents and long-term investments total, $48,64,330. This amount is down $1,550,121 for the month of March. On page two of the report, I've highlighted key receipts for the month. Airport grant, $59,806. Transit grant, federal, $109,128. The remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the city. Page three of the report, I report on the trust funds. We had total cash and cash equivalents of $1,131,117. Total long-term investments, $4,331,344. For a total cash, cash equivalent and long-term investments of $5,462,461. Total cash receipts for the month, $76,352. And total cash disbursements, $54,851. Net change in long-term investments was a decrease of $16,580 for an overall increase of $4,920 to the funds. Page four of the report, this report lists all funds' cash balances with their respective net change for the month. I've highlighted the general fund, which ended with a balance of $11,040,230 with a net change of $1,504,314 for the month. Page five is discussion and analysis presented for your review. And page six of the report is the five-year trend of cash balances. This report continues to reflect a very strong cash position for the city. You will note that we have three funds that have negative balances. They are related to Transit Urban Fund, which is a grant reimbursement fund, so we expend and then we receive a reimbursement. So that is pending receivable. That is outstanding for $182,261. The Debt Service Fund for the Animal Shelter Bond, we received two major remittances from the county for taxes. And we have paid our major payment for the year, so we'll receive the remaining dollars in July, $31,101. The Fund 81, which is the CDBG entitlement fund, a negative $67,220. This is another grant reimbursement fund, so we have pending grant receivables outstanding. So once again, this is a very strong report for the month. And that concludes my cash report for the month.
Any questions, Council, for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
We'll move on to C. Arbor Day Grant Award. Council may wish to approve the mayor's signature on a $300 grant award to the city from the Idaho Nursery and Landscape Association for purchasing and planting trees in association with Arbor Day. The 25% in-kind match will be met by staff, time and equipment for the following: A. Planning; B. Purchase and installing installation of the trees; and C. Celebrating Arbor Day during the Environmental Fair. D. Council Decision, 1500 Block of South First Avenue rezoned by contract. Council may wish to adopt this decision granting a request by Aaron Buckaloo to rezone by contract approximately .44 acres of undeveloped land located in the 1500 Block of South First Avenue from residential, commercial, professional (RCP) to light industrial (LI) for the sole use of constructing a storage and shop building for personal use pursuant to Pocatello Municipal Code 17.02.180BI. Is that one? B1. I. Subject to conditions. E. Council Decision, SIA Tuscanee Plaza Building 100 Final Platte. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final condominium plat for SIA Tuscanee Plaza Building 100 to develop on approximately 1.123 acres of land located on the southeast corner of Hospital Way and Center Street and a five-unit condominium.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Cheetham. Ann, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four is Communication and Proclamations. We have a number of proclamations tonight, so we will have, the first one will be read by Councilmember Cheetham on Arbor Day, Councilmember Johnston, National Service Recognition Day, Councilmember Lurick, National Therapy Animal Day, Councilmember Manon, Portnoy Valley Community Environmental Fair Day, and Councilmember Adamson, the Week of the Young Child.
Proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim April 21, 2018 as Arbor Day and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Who's picking this up? Are you?
I'm supposed to give you a Tree City USA Award. It's associated.
Okay. Come on up here. We're gonna give you this and you can give me that.
It's a mutual exchange.
We're gonna move on this one. There you go. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Gary Bates. I'm the South Idaho Urban Forester. It's my job to help cities in southern Idaho with their tree programs. I'm here representing the Idaho Department of Lands, who I work for, to present the city with their 21st Tree City USA Award. There are 65 Tree City USAs in the state of Idaho. Fifty-two of those are in southern Idaho where I work. There are four things that the city has to do to be a Tree City USA. They have to have a tree committee or a city forestry program. They have to have a tree ordinance that administers for the care of the publicly-owned trees. They have to spend a minimum of $2 per capita for the care of those trees. And they have to celebrate Arbor Day, the best thing. The $2 is a minimum requirement expenditure. It does not have to be cash out of the city budget. It's donated and in-kind goods and services. It's a whole bunch of different things, a percentage of your park's budget. But Pocatello's an overachiever. They identified $10.74 towards tree care and tree-related plantings in the year last year. So that's a great thing. On behalf of the Idaho Department of Lands and the National Arbor Day Foundation, it's my pleasure to present the 21st Tree City USA Award to the city of Pocatello. And we encourage you to continue to plan, care for, and plant trees in your community. So congratulations.
Thank you.
[applause]
Let's turn around so the council can see. I just want you to know, council, it's a lot more comfortable in these seats down here than it is up here.
Thanks very much.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's cities are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas Vista Volunteer participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to national disasters, to supporting veterans and military families. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority through local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is jointly with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April 19, 2018. Now therefore, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim April 19, 2018 to be National Service Recognition Day in Pocatello, and urge residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Signed, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello.
I was told Pastor you were gonna come pick it up.
Okay, the two of the members come up as well.
I'd love to have you all up here.
This one's...
Who do I wanna give this to?
Celeste.
Celeste.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And God bless all of you and congratulations. And I just wanna say, I'm so grateful and so thankful for our Vegas American Vista members. They do such a wonderful job. They work below minimum pay. And they give a hundred percent. And I just wanna say thank you. I appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
[applause]
I did all the work reading that, and he gets the hug.
I'm making up my salsa, Fred.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, that's gonna be a hard act to follow.
That is a hard act to follow.
Proclamation. Whereas there are thousands of Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams serving in communities across the United States. And whereas Pet Partners has designed April 30 as National Therapy Animal Day. And whereas Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams make millions of visits per year in settings such as hospitals, nursing homes, schools, and hospice. And whereas Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students facing literacy challenges, and those approaching end-of-life. And whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim April 30, 2018 to be National Therapy Animal Day in Pocatello, and encourage citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers, and salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation.
Maybe you can get a dog.
I feel like I should go hug Jim, though.
He's a pretty jealous guy. You might have to.
Do I get a dog hug?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think it's a good idea.
I love it. I think it's worth it.
I can't wait. I can't wait.
Proclamation. Whereas a sound natural environment is the foundation of a healthy society and a robust economy. And whereas human activities around the world are causing climate change that threatens human health and our planet's ability to sustain a diverse community of life. And whereas the knowledge of ways to live in harmony with our environment and methods and technologies to reduce our carbon footprint already exists. And whereas local communities can do much to slow down the effects of climate change and contribute to building a healthy society by addressing issues such as energy use, transportation, personal habits, and consumption. And whereas there are sound economic, environmental, and social reasons for local governments to initiate energy efficiency and renewable energy practices. And whereas the environmental realities of our time require humans to make a dramatic shift in their relationship to the earth. Now therefore, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim Saturday, April 21, 2018, to be Portnoy Valley Community Environmental Fair Day in Pocatello as part of the 48th Anniversary Earth Day everyday celebrations around the world. And I encourage our residents, businesses, and institutions to support the fair, as well as make a commitment to undertake programs and projects that enhance our community's natural environment by reducing the city's carbon footprint and help build a sustainable community.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
On behalf of Hannah Sanger and the Portnoy Valley Environmental Fair Committee, thank you. And we need to know that Pocatello is one of the very few cities for hundreds of miles that actually has an environmental fair. Go Pocatello!
Whereas the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 16 through 20, 2018. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide a foundation of learning for children in Idaho. And whereas teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Pocatello, Idaho deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures. Now therefore, Brian Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim April 16 through 20, 2018, to be the Week of the Young Child in Pocatello, and encourages all citizens to work to make a good investment in the early childhood within our community. In early childhood within our community.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And thank you guys for your participation in helping keep our kids safe and help us to provide high-quality childcare for the kids.
Tell everybody who you are. They need to know.
I'm Carrie Peace-Britt. I am the owner of Carrie's Corner Childcare here in Pocatello.
I'm Cory Lewis. I'm the owner of the Lighthouse Preschool in Pocatello. And we are on the childcare adventure plan.
Which is the City of Pocatello Committee that plays a vital role in protecting children.
Yes. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Lewis.
Thank you. I have to tell you, I'm glad Ken Poppy didn't pick up one of those proclamations.
I didn't do one. I could do that.
That was the one you were supposed to do.
All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five as a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On May 3, at 9:00 a.m. will be a Budget Development Meeting. At 5:30 p.m. will be a Clarification Meeting. And at 6:00 p.m. will be a regular City Council Meeting. On May 10, at 9:00 a.m. will be a Study Session, followed by a Budget Development Meeting. Other events, early voting for primary elections is now open through May 11. 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Voting takes place at the Bannock County Elections Office, 141 North Sixth Avenue. April 19 through the 21st, Marshall Public Library Spring Used Books Sale beginning at 9:00 a.m. each day. Contact Marshall Public Library for more information. April 21, Environmental Fair at Caldwell Park, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Citizens using the PRT fixed routes or special services during the Environmental Fair hours will ride for free to and from Caldwell Park. April 21, Medicine Takeback Day, part of the Environmental Fair. Law enforcement agencies will take back and safely dispose of unwanted medications to keep them out of our water supply. April 21, 21st Annual Run With The Big Dogs Fund Run fundraiser for the Pocatello Animal Shelter. Contact the Animal Shelter for more information and to register for the event. April 28, Historic Preservation Conference, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Wood River Room at ISU Student Union Building. Theme of this event is Historic Pocatello, and will feature several speakers. I know, Jim, this is a big, you're a big fan of this. Did you wanna say anything here or no?
I tell ya, this is gonna be an opportunity to showcase many of the historic things of our community. And it's a prelude to the month of May, which is Historic Preservation and Archaeology Month in the state of Idaho. So it's a good deal. And our committee has really done a great job putting this together.
Super. Thank you. Zoo Idaho is now open on weekends only and will open seven days a week beginning May 1. Annual spring cleanup at city cemeteries continues. Crews are removing and discarding all flowers and decorations. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. May 5, citywide cleanup at Caldwell Park. 8:30 to 10 o'clock is breakfast. And after you have a free breakfast, we expect you to go clean something up in Pocatello. Okay. I'm just saying we expect it. I mean, I'm not confident everybody does.
Maybe we could get a little competition going with you and Rick. Rick thinks he knows how to cook pancakes, but I know you could do a better job, Mr. Mayor.
I have already volunteered to make the batter.
Okay. Then you and I can have a competition on it.
And I'm not confident I'm making pancakes. They've seen me burn too many. So, we're gonna go ahead and move on. I've lost control of this meeting already, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, the Crossing Division One Final Platte. Michael R. Draglowski, P.E. of Portnoy Development LLC and Kent Orem of Idaho Central Credit Union, represented by Paul Freezer, P.E. of SE Science, has submitted an application to subdivide 37.31 acres more or less into 97 lots. The subdivision is located at the intersection of East Chubbick Road and Olympus Drive and is to be known as the Crossings Division One. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the preliminary plat at their meeting on February 28, 2018, and recommend approval with conditions. Councilman, Councilwoman Adamson?
What's something going on?
I don't, I was, no. I was looking at Rick, but I'm talking to you now.
Okay.
Got to get a motion.
Okay. We're looking for a motion.
I would move that we approve the request.
I second that motion.
Subject to the conditions.
Mr. Mayor?
Go. So just one second. We have a motion and a second motion by Adamson and a second by Johnston. We have a comment.
We do. I'm gonna vote against this out of protest to the number of cuts on the Chubbick Road. I think Chubbick Road needs to be maintained as a high-speed thoroughfare for that whole neighborhood, much as Olympus is at this time. And I don't like to see a cut every 120 yards along that road.
But this particular one only calls for two.
Yep, and about 350 yards. Right, Merrill?
Yeah.
Merrill Quell, the Public Works Engineer for the City of Pocatello, to, just a second. I'll see if I can, can I still talk?
Absolutely.
I was checking to see if you were telling me.
No, please do. No, 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 no. No.
Okay.
You're good.
Making sure I was okay. Councilman, pre-request, I did check. From the interstate to Chubbick Road and Olympus is .7 miles roughly. So, and then the first intersection is 800 feet away from Chubbick Road and Olympus, and then about another 400 feet to the next one currently on this, on this proposed plat here. And then, as we discussed, unofficially that's been submitted, there could be up to four, possibly five along there if that proposal went forward. So I hope that answered your question.
It does. I just simply think that's too many cuts on Chubbick Road.
Okay.
Thank you, Merrill.
Thank you. Okay. A motion by Adamson and a second by Johnston. Ann, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
No.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Seven, Riverside Greens Townhouse Subdivision Third Edition Short Platte. David Vickley of Rocky Mountain Investing LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted an application to subdivide 0.62 acres more or less into four residential lots located east of Bannock Highway and south of Lumberg Lane. The subdivision is located within a residential medium-density single-family zoning district and is to be known as Riverside Greens Townhouse Subdivision Third Edition. Staff recommends approval of the request with conditions. Councilman Bray?
Mayor, I move that we approve this based on and include the conditions that are in it.
I second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Manon. Ann, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eight, Sunny Grove Subdivision Short Platte. Jody Adamson, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted an application to subdivide 0.80 acres more or less into two residential lots located at the end of Grisney Court. The subdivision is located within residential medium-density single-family zoning district and is to be known as Sunny Grove Subdivision. Staff recommends approval of the request with conditions outlined in the staff report. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this subdivision based on the following of the conditions outlined by the staff report. Check.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheetham. Ann, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Declaration of Surplus Property 2018 City Auction. Council may wish to declare items identified as surplus property to be sold at the city's annual auction on May 12, 2018. City departments submitted lists of items that they consider surplus. Council may wish to declare items identified as surplus property to be sold at the city's annual auction on May 12, 2018. City departments submitted lists of items that they consider surplus, and these were reviewed by other departments. The items to be considered as surplus are not needed by any other department within the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheetham?
I move for approval of Agenda Item Number Nine, the Declaration of City Surplus Property at a 2018 city auction.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetham and a second by Lurick, Ann, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Airport Hangar Lease Agreements. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the following lease agreements for hangars at the Pocatello Regional Airport. A, Don Marler, Hangar Number Four. B, Ben Cardone, Hangar Number One. Both agreements are for approximately 1,760 square feet of hangar space for the purpose of aircraft storage. Proposed terms for each lease is five years with a rental rate of $235 per month increased annually at least by the amount of the customer price index increase for the previous 12-month period. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve these airport hangar lease agreements and that we authorize you to sign them.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston, Ann, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
I feel like we should have called David Allen up here, it'll be his last time to speak, and all that stuff to everybody, he's over there saying, "No, no, no."
Will you at least give Jim a hug? I'm just kidding.
Okay, we won't call him up then. Thank you, David.
We've scared him off.
He's kicking at him.
He's gonna come give Jim a hug. Agenda Item Eleven, Agreement Construction Manager/General Contractor for remodel of city building at 2405 Garrett Way. Street Operations Department required the assistance of a construction manager/general contractor CM/GC for the partial remodel of the newly acquired property located at 2405 Garrett Way. This was submitted as a request for qualifications, four companies requested bid packages with one submitting qualification. Street operations staff is recommending that the City of Pocatello enter into an agreement with Contractor, Construction Service Incorporated to provide CM/GC services. The council may also wish to authorize the mayor to sign any contract documents to execute the agreement. Councilwoman Adamson?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agreement and authorize you to sign any necessary documents. Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick.
I have a, is this gonna be subject to legal review?
Do you want it subject to legal review?
Does it need to be?
Yeah.
I think anytime we do.
Okay, yes.
I thought I heard her say subject to legal review.
I thought she did too. She's super quiet.
That's right, super quiet, she did that. So, a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick, Ann, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Twelve, Resolution Adopting Amended Joint Powers Agreement and Articles of Association of the Bannock Planning Organization. Council may wish to adopt a resolution approving amended joint powers agreement and articles of association of the Bannock Planning Organization.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to hear some comments from Maury as to why this is necessary and why we're doing this, and what the benefit is to Pocatello.
Grab a, make a motion first.
I think while he's coming up, I move we authorize this, but I think some of the council needs.
Second.
Okay.
That can discuss.
Okay, so, you, President Johnston, you made a motion to authorize the execution of this?
Correct.
And Councilman Bray seconded it. Now we would like to hear from Maury Byington.
Maury Byington, Plan, Route, Bannock, Transportation, Plannerization. To answer your question, Bannock Planning is created by a joint powers agreement between you, City Chubbick, and Bannock County. You've given us the authority to do transportation planning since 1982. And since 1982, the articles have said that the match that comes with the federal dollars we get to do planning in our region, because we're a metropolitan plannerization, there's a match of 7%, we have to provide that. They come up with a formula of shares, that there would be 12 shares, City Pocatello would take eight, City Chubbick would take three, and Bannock County would have one. About every three or four years, it always comes up, well, why did we do it that way? And I was told, because I wasn't here that far back, that they went into a room and came out with eight, three, and one. So that's been, since 1982, every couple of years it comes up. County Commissioner Frazier brought it up last year and says, "We need to change that, Bannock County is not paying their fair share, we should be paying less, look at the formula." So we went back and looked at the formula of other places in the region and come up with it, we should have a 50% population and 50% board member participation. So there's eight board members, the county has one, Idaho Transportation Department has one, PRT, Portnough Regional Transit has one, City Pocatello has three, City Chubbick has two. And that comes up with a formula that we'd now be able to change over time. Chubbick is a lot bigger than it was in 1980, so they should be paying more percentage of that. And so that's the formula we came up with. For Pocatello, it really doesn't change anything. You, decreases by 3,500, but PRT has never paid a share before, so they would increase by about 3,500. Bannock County, they were right, they weren't paying their fair share, they owe another 800. Instead of paying less, they actually have to pay more. They thanked them very much for that at their meeting, and...
He is no longer a commissioner, by the way.
And Chubbick and ITD switch, so that's the primary reason. We did do some changes of updating the open meeting law and stuff like that. The real change was just for the change of the match. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so Ann, let me get this right, we have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Bray. Could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho revising Title 15.20 Sign Code of the Pocatello Municipal Code, more particularly described, or more particularly by revising Section 15.20.030 definitions, Sections, Section 15.20.160 reader boards, Section 15.20.20.180 signs permitted and conditions thereto in the residential, commercial, professional district, Section 15.20.240 off-premise billboard signs, Section 15.20.250 exception procedures, and renumbering Section 15.20.250 exception procedures, Section 15.20.260 standards, exceptions, Section 15.20.270 signs by conditional use permits, Section 15.20.280 non-conforming signs, Section 15.20.290 removal of non-conforming signs, Section 15.20.300 inspection responsibility for unsafe and unlawful signs, Section 15.20.310 penalties, and Section 15.20.320 civil enforcement. Providing that all other sections of Chapter 15.20 not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
No.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. We had nobody sign in, and so with that, I would like to thank the council for all of their work today, I would like to thank the staff for all their work today too. We've been here a long time, in fact, all day, I believe, so, thank you very much for your hard work. With that, we are adjourned.